Good evening. It is May 17, 2022. This is the Town of Hingham Select Board. I'd like to call the meeting to order and begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we begin the next item on the agenda, I'd like to read a statement. In recent days, we've all seen and read the reports from the tragic events in Buffalo and Laguna Woods. These premeditated racially motivated murders are a terrible reminder of the evils of our country that we continue to fight. Hatred has no place in our country or in our Hingham community and will not be tolerated. Here in Hingham, we have several ways to combat hatred. If you see something that concerns you, please report it to the town's Civil Rights Officer, that is Lieutenant John Markwart. The Hingham Police Department has established a direct line to Lieutenant Markwart where you can leave a message, and that phone number is 781-804-2230. Or you can email him at civilrights@hpd.org. Further, we expect to announce the membership of our new Human Rights Commission very soon. While the Human Rights Commission will not be charged with adjudicating individual disputes or claims, the commission should be made aware of issues of concern that arise in our community. By working together and continuing to respect one another, we can continue to keep Hingham a safe, welcoming place to live for everyone. I'd like to move on to approval of minutes. I am prepared to proceed. Liz, are you?
I'm ready.
And Bill?
I'm ready.
Then I'm prepared to accept the motion.
Make a motion to approve the minutes dated April 14, 2022.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll take the next motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes dated April 25, 2022.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. One more set of minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes dated May 10, 2022.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
They are all approved. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is to reorganize this Select Board. Every year after town meeting, we recognize the new person who's been elected. In this case, that's me. I've been reelected. And then we move to reorganize the Select Board. Do I have a motion in that regard?
I will make a motion to nominate and appoint Phil Ramsey as Chair of the Hingham Select Board.
I will second that motion. I will give Bill one moment to consider.
Tempting.
And hearing no opposition, I will take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous, Bill. So we are going to change seats.
Thank you.
Oh, Bill, we've got to change this.
We've got to change this. People at home don't get confused. All right, I just want to begin by just congratulating Joe on a successful year. And thank you for leading the board through the past year, Joe. And I want to thank my colleagues for entrusting me with the chairmanship. We have a challenge in a year ahead, and I'm looking forward to the challenges and getting the board through it and getting the town through what will be a wonderful year ahead. So thank you for this opportunity. Appreciate it. Next item on the agenda is to authorize the Chair to approve all bills, drafts, orders, and payrolls on behalf of the Select Board pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 41, Section 56. This is an administrative act that we take every year when we elect a new Chair. But Tom, you want to add to anything?
I would have said exactly that, Bill. This is a, this, we did this in recent years or past years, we used to name the person, but I think it's more appropriate that it be by title, and that's the Chair has authorized to do this work, so.
Okay, great. Any questions from my colleagues? I'll turn to Liz first.
No questions. Thank you.
Joe?
Nope.
Any questions from the public? Seeing none, then I'll take a motion.
I will move to authorize the Chair to approve all bills, drafts, orders, and payrolls on behalf of the Select Board pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 41, Section 56.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any need for further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is the Mattie's Promise Proclamation. I do want to note that I do see Mrs. McCoy in the audience, and thank you for joining us. I was honored to attend the event on Friday night in honor of Mattie's Promise, and it was just absolutely a wonderful event and very well attended, and it was wonderful to see it. So I know we do have a proclamation to be read, so I'm going to turn to Liz to do the honors.
Town of Hingham Proclamation Made Mattie's Promise Day. Whereas Mattie's Promise is a nonprofit organization that was started in memory of Hingham resident Madeline "Maddie" McCoy in 2019, and whereas Maddie has used her courage, gentle spirit, and generosity to bring a smile to everyone she met, and whereas Maddie created art to sell to raise money for pediatric cancer while receiving treatment at Boston Children's Hospital, and whereas Maddie has been an inspiration to all who met her and hear about her courageous battle with Rabdomyosarcoma, a rare and aggressive type of cancerous tumor of the soft tissue, and whereas Maddie has inspired the creation of nonprofit Mattie's Promise, and whereas Mattie's Promise seeks to help others forward with the goal of closing the funding gap of rare pediatric cancers. Now therefore, we, Joseph M. Fisher, William C. Ramsey, and Elizabeth F. Klein, Select Board of the Town of Hingham, do hereby proclaim Monday, May 23, 2022, as Mattie's Promise Day in the Town of Hingham, and urge all citizens to observe this day by emulating the spirit and attitude of Maddie McCoy and being the change the world needs. Voted this 17th day of May, 2022.
Excellent. Thank you for saying that, Liz. And with that, I would entertain a motion.
I will make a motion to proclaim Monday, May 23, 2022, as Mattie's Promise Day in the Town of Hingham.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Anne, for coming, and thank you to you and your family for all you're doing going forward.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda is for the Board to consider approval of the special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Deirdre Anderson on behalf of Hingham Historical Society for Springham to be held at Hingham Heritage Museum on Saturday, May 21, 2022, with an alternate date of Saturday, May 28, 2022, from 2:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. And I see Deirdre has stepped up to the microphone. So Deirdre, go ahead if you could just introduce yourself on the record and tell us about the event.
Thank you, Chairperson Ramsey. Deirdre Anderson, I'm the Executive Director of the Hingham Historical Society, and I appreciate appearing before the Board this evening. Clearly, I am still in 2020 and was logging in from home, so please pardon my appearance, which is not befitting of this esteemed Board and this hall, so my apologies.
You're great.
But yes, the Hingham Historical Society this year in partnership with the Hingham Downtown Association is planning Springham for this Saturday. We billed this as an outdoor concert and festival for families to come down. This originated last spring, where we were hoping to encourage a vaccinated post-COVID world to come back down to downtown Hingham. So we condensed the celebration, last year was a six-week series, to one longer day this Saturday, May 21, from 2:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., where we will, in partnership with the Downtown Association, be offering the community a free outdoor concert series. We have five local performers, three bands, two individual performers playing on two separate temporary stages at the Hingham Heritage Museum. The merchants are offering retail promotions, restaurants are offering food and beverage specials, we'll have family activities, and Vitamin C Brewery is bringing in their truck to our parking lot, and we'll be selling, we'll be selling cans of their craft brew. We will have tables set up behind the Heritage Museum. We will have signage that lets participants who have chosen to purchase an alcohol beverage let them know that they can't leave the property of the Hingham Heritage Museum, and we will have staff and volunteers also reminding participants of that. We have also worked with Hingham Police Department to hire a detail to manage the bottom of the Heritage Museum driveway on Main Street.
Excellent. Well, I attended, you know, a lot of the Springham events last year, and they were wonderful, and I know this one will be equally as good. And the weather looks good on Saturday, too, a little hot, so it's going to have some nice weather, so.
Thank goodness.
I'll turn to my colleagues, see if they have any questions before we hear from the Chief. So Liz, do you have any questions?
No real questions. Thank you, Deirdre, for bringing this back downtown. It was such a wonderful series of events last year and a nice way for the community to come back together after COVID. So looking forward to this. I know we've worked with Vitamin C Brewery in the past. They're really good about having the truck in the back and controlled and recycling bins, so I'm sure that that will be fine. So no questions on the application. Thank you.
Joe, any questions?
Deirdre, you were so complete. You've answered every question in advance of me asking it, so I've got no questions. I think it'll be wonderful. Thank you.
As we customarily do with these type of events, we do ask the Chief for any input or any concerns you might have, Chief. So if you could approach the mic and just, we all know you are, identify yourself for the record if you don't mind.
Morning. I'm David Jones, Chief for the Hingham Police Department, and I reviewed the application. And as Ms. Anderson said, they do have a detail scheduled. I also hear that Officer Ford and Opry may be making an appearance down there also. And I have no issues.
Opry and Officer Ford.
I forget about Officer Ford when Opry shows up, so. But I have no issues at all with the application.
Excellent.
Thank you.
All right. Is there any questions or comments from anybody in the public? Okay, seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the request for a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Deirdre Anderson on behalf of Hingham Historical Society for Springham to be held in Hingham Heritage Museum on Saturday, May 21, 2022, with an alternate date of Saturday, May 28, 2022, from 2:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any need for further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Deirdre. Good luck on Saturday.
Thank you all so much. Thanks. See you Saturday.
See you then. Next item on the agenda is to consider the request of Verizon to install and maintain a new pole at approximately 54 Gardner Street to be used as a guy pole supporting pole number 17/P12 located at 53 Gardner Street. I believe we have here Mr. James Del Torondo speak on the application.
James Del Torondo, representing Verizon New England. Less exciting than a festival, but we need this one. So you pretty much said it all. We place a guy pole across the street about 28 feet southeast side of Gardner Street in front of 54 Gardner Street. It's to counteract the force on the corner of pole 12. Any questions?
What is, guys, I'll start off by asking, what is a guy pole?
So a guy pole is used to counteract the forces on a pole. When there's an angle and the cables are pulling at an angle, it's going to push the pole or pull the pole away. So the guy pole has a guy wire, and it goes across the street, and it pulls the pole away so that it doesn't fall over.
Take a support.
Yes.
Okay. Let me turn to Joe first. You have any questions?
Yes. Do you look at whether or not there are any potential obstructions created by the new pole that you're going to be installing?
Absolutely. I mean, each one of these poles is surveyed for field conditions, and any obstructions are noted for the engineering.
So are there any obstructions that were noted?
Not that I am aware of.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Your engineer is here, if you're going to ask him?
Oh. Are there any obstructions, sir?
No, there are no obstructions with respect to underground utilities that we know of. They'll still have to dig safe it and confirm that.
Right.
With a little field excavation. This is actually replacing what is effectively a tree guy. So the guy wire is currently secured to a natural tree about 30 feet inside the property.
Got it.
And so I suspect that this makes Verizon's infrastructure a little more secure because they're not depending on the forbearance of the property owners to keep the tree.
Correct. And if you could just identify yourself for the...
Oh, sorry. JR Fry, Town Engineer.
Thank you.
Great.
You've answered my question. No further questions. Thank you.
Liz, any, any questions or comments?
Just a question, JR. I'm assuming all of the abutters have been notified and the yard, the owners at 54?
So they should have been notified for this hearing? They'll be notified by Verizon separately when the work is going to take place. However, I anticipate that it's really a couple-hour job.
Yeah, I mean, a pole placement doesn't typically take too much time.
So there's not a lot of disruption for the residents or for any of the commuters that use Gardner Street.
Okay. And when is the work going to be done?
I don't have a scheduled date for the work on me. Sorry.
It won't be July 4, though, huh?
I hope not.
Okay.
Okay. No other questions. Thank you.
JR, anything else to add?
The placement of the pole is consistent with other poles being placed along the street, so it does not constitute an additional unwarranted hazard to motorists or anything like that.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody in the public have any questions or comments? Mr. Bill, if you could come up to the mic. Bob, if you could just state your name and address.
I'm Bill Elmstreet, retired Verizon engineer, 20 years as a splicer, 20 years as an engineer. You know, we all use these phones. They all run on cables to get to the poles, to get to the cell sites, to make this stuff work. And it's the bell system which these standards are based upon, they overengineer to provide the safety reliability. So I would say it's a, it's a good thing. The one is poles are here when you guys. When the two guys...
Thank you, Bob. Appreciate it. Anyone else? All right, seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
I will make a motion to approve the request of Verizon to install and maintain a new pole at approximately 54 Gardner Street to be used as a guy pole supporting pole number 17/P12 located at 53 Gardner Street. The proposed pole will be located in the right-of-way and will replace the use of a private tree on private property currently used as a guy anchor. This approval is subject to the stipulations of the Department of Public Works as outlined in the letter dated May 3, 2022.
Second.
Is there need for further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, sir. Good luck.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda is to consider approval of the amendment to agreement with T.L. Edwards, Inc. for roadway management work. And we have JR and Kathy here. So JR, I'll have you take the lead here, and then we'll go to Kathy for any questions as well.
Sure. So T.L. Edwards is our selected contractor for paving this year. We are extending the MAPC contract under which we did work with them last year. The contract amount is for 954,885 dollars. That is an estimated amount, and depending on the actual unit quantities that we complete in the field, they will be paid upon invoicing.
Kathy, do you want anything?
Kathy Riley, Procurement and Contracts Manager for Hingham. No, this is a, the MAPC does the bidding for this contract on behalf of the South Shore Regional Consortium, and which Hingham is a member of, and this is the last year of their contract. So they're, they're going out to bid soon, so it will restart a new one January 1st. And so then we'll join that one next year.
Thank you. Let me turn to my colleagues for questions. Liz, do you have any questions or comments?
Just want to confirm that this is already in the budget for DPW.
Yes, yeah. It's a combination of Chapter 90 funding as well as a, an additional supplementary grant from the state, the Winter Recovery Act. That's the primary sources of funding, and it is all budgeted for.
Okay, great. Thank you. No other questions?
Joe? I've got no questions.
Okay. Any members of the public like to ask anything and make any comments? All right. Seeing none, I will take a motion.
I will move to authorize the Town Administrator to sign the amendment to the agreement with T.L. Edwards, Inc. for roadway management work in an amount not to exceed 954,885 dollars for a term ending December 31, 2022.
Second.
Is there need for further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I'm going to have to keep you up here for the next one. All right. Next item on the agenda is to consider approval of the amendment to agreement with Mass Pavement Reclamation Incorporated for Equipment Rental and Labor. So JR, I'll have you start off with this one as well.
Sure. Mass Pavement Reclamation is our on-call contractor for various services that supplement our roadway improvement program. So some elements of our roadway reconstruction are accomplished through our Mass Pavement Reclamation contract. In addition to that, they handle much of our sidewalk construction, they handle much of our drainage construction and repair, and they generally handle a lot of on-call-type work for the town, for DPW. The primary budget for that is through DPW's operating budget, but it is also supplemented by Chapter 90, where they're working on Chapter 90 projects.
Kathy, anything to add?
Just that we did this contract originally last April, so this is the first extension. There's, the contract was for one year with two extensions available, so a total of three years if we use them all. This is the second one.
Thank you. Joe, any questions?
Just confirming, this is Liz's question in terms of the budget. Are we consistent with what we projected for this expense?
Yes. This is actually a high number based on last year, which had a large number of sidewalk repairs and tree removals that they helped us with due to that false storm.
Right.
And so this number is all-encompassing. I have every confidence that we'll be well within this budget.
And are you satisfied with the work that this company does?
Yes. I'm very comfortable with the work that they're, they have done and are continuing to do. Yeah.
Right. No further questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Liz?
No questions. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any member of the public have any questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, I will take a motion.
I will make a motion to authorize the Town Administrator to sign the amendment to the agreement with Mass Pavement Reclamation Incorporated for Equipment Rental and Labor in an amount not to exceed $443,000 effective April 13, 2022, for a term ending April 13, 2023.
Second.
Is there need for further discussion? Hearing none, I move the motion forward. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. JR, Kathy, thank you.
Thank you.
Great night. All right. Next item on the agenda is appointments. I don't believe we have any tonight, Tom. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. So we will move next to our COVID-19 update. Tom, go ahead.
Sure. Thank you, Bill.
Bill's fine.
Bill's fine. Okay. So the COVID-19 report for today, in my last report last Tuesday, I noted that Hingham's... A lot of feedback on that mic. You want me to use this one? So in my last report last Tuesday, I noted that Hingham's COVID-19 numbers were up significantly and that this may trigger new protocols in the coming days. So sure enough, as of last Thursday, the CDC determined that Plymouth County's COVID-19 community health level was now high, and at this level, the CDC recommends that we all wear a well-fitting mask indoors and public places regardless of vaccination status, stay up to date with COVID-19 vaccines and boosters, follow the CDC recommendations for isolation and quarantine, and get tested if you have been exposed. So as of last Friday, we informed the community of the CDC's determination and its recommendations through our website and posting on town buildings. We've also reactivated the COVID-19 dashboard on our COVID-19 Updates webpage. The following data is from 4/24 to 5/7 and is compared to the previous week of 4/17 to 4/30. So the Hingham's 14-day average incidence rate in that period is 42.3, which is up from 30.4. That's a 39% increase from the previous week. Hingham's 14-day average positivity rate is 11.3%, which is up over 9.3% from the previous week. We believe that some of the drivers for this increase include vacation spikes and testing due to travel plans and even perhaps the removal of the mask mandate on public transportation and airlines. However, going forward, we will update the dashboard on Mondays before noon so that the community can be informed. The CDC is looking at a combination of three metrics to the COVID-19 levels in our county. This data is updated weekly on Thursdays based on new admissions and inpatient bed metrics and based on the current level of new cases per 100,000 population in the past seven days. So that's the source of the data and how they collect it. We will remain vigilant. We will continue to monitor data and take coordinated action as needed.
Any questions? Thank you. I'll start with a quick question. I know this winter we were able to give out free home testing kits. Do we still have any in supply?
We do still have some in supply. They're not dwindling, but they're less than they used to. However, we just got a notice the other day that the government will be issuing new, new round of COVID test kits. I don't know when, but they are planning to be doing so sometime soon.
You can fill out the form online now?
And to get them.
To get the additional tests delivered to your house.
Oh, really? Great.
Great.
And the other, the other question I have, Tom, is I know that a lot of people are testing positive at home, through home tests, but they're still encouraged to report that through our Board of Health, correct?
Yeah, that's a great point. Thank you for asking. That's exactly right. If you are testing positive at home, please call our Board of Health, our Board of Health Office in this building. Health, our executive health officer, Susan Sarini, will record that, and it will help us track what's actually happening in Hingham and react accordingly. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Liz, anything else?
No additional questions. Thank you for updating the dashboard. I think that's really important.
Joe?
No questions. You mentioned dashboard. It seems like you're in a sports car, you're getting a dashboard.
We work fast around you.
But this is, but this is serious stuff, so thank you for the, for the report.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thanks, Tom.
You bet.
All right. All right, next item on the agenda is public comment. This item on the agenda is reserved... I'm sorry, before I do that, any, any members of the public have any questions about the COVID-19 update? Okay, seeing none. I'll move next to public comment. This item on the agenda is reserved for members of the public to come up and express any public comment that they would like for items not previously posted on the agenda. We cannot comment publicly on any items not on the agenda, but we certainly want to give members of the public an opportunity to speak and ask any questions or make any comments. So do we have any members of the public who'd like to come up? Mr. Bill, come on up.
Good evening. Once again, I'm Robert F. Beal, Jr. Where I reside at 71 Elm Street. Born, raised in the Town of Hingham. Family dating back beyond the history of the United States.
I reside at 71 Elm Street. Born, raised in the town of Hingham. Family dating back beyond the history of the United States. That's really, means nothing. I'm here because I have some concerns, and if I can approach.
Sure, come on up.
About what has not taken place in almost four years. I'm a Vietnam veteran in the United States Air Force. I entered the Air Force in January of 1969, and I was discharged in June 1972. And many people have a question usually when they see me for the first time, and the answer to the question is June 21, 1972. I'm here tonight because of what I have seen not happen at Barnes Wharf regarding the MIA POW memorial. Almost four years ago, I was approached with the VSO officer Keith German by the Harbor Development Committee that the bulkhead at Harbor Park was in desperate need of repair and that they were filing to have it removed, replaced, rebuilt, and that 17 feet of the park would be lost as a result of that. Their first thought and desire, as it was with the Iron Horse with the two cannons, was to remove them and put them in behind the highway barn until they could figure out what to do with it. They had again came and said, why don't we just take the flagpole down for an unknown amount of time, remove the plaque, and stick it behind the highway barn until we get the money, we rebuild the park? Four years. Now I understand they're not anywhere closer to doing that work. I understand budgets. But what Keith and I did, because I am the promoter or memorial heirs because of my actions in 1985, we stepped too. And we promised what we would do was we would, we would search out all, all responsible boards, departments, and committees to make that happen, to pick out a place. It was determined that the center of Barnes Wharf was an accepted place. We met out there one day with Tom May, myself, Selectman Johnson at the time was here as the Veterans Rep, and Keith German to go over where it would be put and how it would be built. What I brought, what I gave to you, well, I'm going to back up a little bit. This memorial has history, as every memorial at the harbor has history. And in 1985, I made a proposal to place an MIA POW memorial flagpole at Harbor Park. And that was a result of a visit from the town in legislation that had been passed previously by Representative Mary Jeanette Murray from Hull, that all state and town facilities fly the MIA POW flag. And all state DPW vehicles displayed the decal. Well, like many things in legislature, they make rules and they make laws, but oftentimes they fail to put the money in to pay for those. So an organization, a loose organization of Vietnam veterans, the Massachusetts Vigil Society, came to the town of Hingham because a recently returning body of Paul Sullivan, U.S. naval, who had been held as a POW in Hanoi, who had went out one day to be interrogated and never returned. The war ended, he never came home. Years later, his body was recovered, and there was going to be a procession coming from the airport to the town of Hull for that day. And the Vigil Society came to town, asked can we, can they fly three, three MIA POW flags before the Board of Selectmen at the police station, central fire, and Lincoln School Apartments? You know, you might, it might, I never speak ill of the dead. You be careful because you're still living. I don't speak ill of the dead. The question was asked by the chairman of the board. They looked right, they looked left. Do we have any MIA POWs from Hingham? I was flabbergasted, flabbergasted why that was even a question. And the individual indicated that we have one at the Hingham Fire Station, we have one at the Hingham Police, and we have one at Lincoln Apartments. It wasn't exactly true. The one at the Hingham Police Station was, was borrowed by Chief Prowinski at the time because he, being a veteran himself, wanted to make sure as that casket passed 3A on Hingham Fire St., Police Station, they would be represented. I personally went to the fire station, central fire, and said, what's up? Well, we're waiting, we're waiting for someone to order for us because we don't have the funds. Lincoln School Apartments were flying the MIA POW flag because there was an individual there, Joe Dunn, Sr. This is Joe Dunn, Jr., MIA POW bracelet that I've been wearing since 1970. His dad was at Lincoln Apartments, so they flew the flag because he was there in honor of his son. The day he died, they removed the flag. So then we had no flags in Hingham. So in 1985, I was chairman of the Conservation Commission. Harbor Park is under the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission. I approached the commission. But prior to that, I was serving on the, on the Memorial Day Committee, and I approached the chairman of that committee about having an MIA POW flag at the harbor to represent our interest and concern, as we tell everyone in the world, we care for veterans. Initially, the agreement was made, yeah, that's a good idea, until one night I received a phone call that said that he had removed his support because Vietnam veterans were losers. And that he didn't see the need, and it was, he wouldn't allow me to bring it up at the Veterans Day services. I couldn't tell the people what I wanted to do because we were losers. Well, we were losers or nothing, didn't stop me. And then the veteran and I, who was since passed on, we held a silent protest to the left of the ceremony, holding MIA POW flag. That night, I received a second call from the individual after he had really, was in a bad mood. He was in a bad place. The following Tuesday, I went and resigned from the committee because they told me I was no longer wanted, no longer needed, and it was, we were losers. And I went out on my own because I'm not a loser. I don't quit. I took $100 and we started a fund, put it in the bank. I got a phone call November 23, my birthday, from a developer we had in town at the time, Tom Hastings. He said, Bob, what kind of flagpole do you want? How big do you want it? When do you want it? I said, this tall, this wide? He said, it'll be in your yard this week. When do you want it delivered? When do you want it mounted? He's had his own people do that. So 1986, we had that done. And on Flag Day of 1986, we had an MIA POW dedication at the harbor. The American flag had been flown over the United States Capitol. Our representative Jerry Studs came from Washington, reestablished, reconfigured his day to be there to present that flag to the town of Hingham. The MIA POW flag was the one that had been removed from Lincoln Apartments at Joe Dunn, Sr.'s passing. The state flag had flown over the State House here by Secretary Hilaichis, who was Secretary of Veterans Affairs at the time. Very, three very symbolic places and things for this to happen. A small plaque was made, put onto a board with a four-by-four on the ground, and we went on. And the wording on the plaque is that, you know, through the determination of Robert F. Beal, Jr., the gracious generosity of Tom Hastings, and the continued support of the citizens of Hingham, that the flagpole will be there 24/7, 365, until it's a full accountability of all MIA POWs from all services, all conflicts. Well, it went on, but never really officially recognized. When we used to go down to the harbor to lay the wreath, it was never discussed that that was over there. It was never really accepted. But being a Vietnam veteran, that was not uncommon because we weren't really accepted coming home either. So we received a call, we need it moved, what can you do? We got to act and, and we did it. We found a place, and that was almost four years ago. In addition to that, my family, now, if you knew me, you know, I'm a person that does many, many things, but I don't say what I do. I don't pat myself on the back. People who know me know what I do. But I'll tell you a couple of things. I think it's important because some of you folks don't know me. Any of you had your children, grandchildren to Christmas in the Square in the last 49 years? Okay, I have a close connection with that character, that Christmas in the Square. Now, vendors and things get paid money when they appear. I have not accepted nor asked for any money, any remuneration from my appearance. It's about the town I live in, the town I love. All I requested was anything that you think is fair and honest, give to the veterans. Give to the Veterans Service Office, and give to the Veterans and Need Fund. I didn't see a thing in the paper about, look at me, look at what I did for the veterans. It was just done. So that's a contribution. When the flagpole came to be moved, we required the drawings I gave out to you. We required to have the town engineer design this plan. You can see, it's got a circle, it has notations about cobble and prick and block and the little structures, the two in yellow, those are benches, those are the town benches. So my family donated one, in my mother's name, donated another to be removed, to be replaced from Torrent Station because Torrent Station is going to become a surplus building and would have been lost in the weeds, and it would have been a conflict with whatever development took place. Now, I grew up in Crow Point, and if you know the orientation of the harbor in Barnes Wharf, the left and right depiction where my parents were to be my parents' memorial benches facing to where they raised their four children in Crow Point, that was our intent. My mom and dad, I learned not to speak for myself and pat myself on the back for my mom and dad. And they're gone, but this was in their memory. Well, four years into it, it hasn't been finished. Now, now I understand it can't be done that way. The flagpole was placed, I have pictures, I have pictures, and the flagpole is still over a foot above the ground. So after four years, this is how that flagpole sits. You know, I, I mean, a couple of years of COVID, I get that. And then the stone, the stone was initially, I told you, was a wood plaque. It was a plastic engraved wording. Goldberg Enterprises donated the brass, the bronze staff, the bronze plaque. The stone was, was donated again with, like Tom Hastings later on. He said, Bob, it should be like the Vietnam Memorial. I'm going to find you a piece of black granite to do that. So this is what we have today that got moved from Harbor Park to Barnes Wharf. But what else happened? What happened? Apparently, there was a hiccup. Hiccups happen all the time. The stone was placed by an outside contractor. It's kitty-corner, it's tilted, it's not in the right place. Now, it's, we can't fix it. We can't afford to do what we said we were going to do to support you, the town. Now, the other thing we did is we raised money. So the two benches donated by my family, we'll say $5,000 that they took with the bench. Well, from the time we ordered that until maybe a month ago, it sat in the brush, in the weeds, behind the highway barn, tucked away next to some debris, outside, three and a half years. My dad's was over at Torrent, he got brought over. Recidentally, that stone was moved the day before, the dedication of what was going on, just to kind of have it there. This is how the stone sits. Off the one side, off the one side, askew. You don't see the benches there? We just told you the benches are there. Well, the benches aren't there. The first benches that went into the little cutouts, if you look on the plan on the edges surrounding the park, the Barnes Memorial Park, that there were four wooden benches. Well, this is no mingling. A lot of, made a lot of weather, became deteriorated. So the Highway Department decided that they could solve two things. They could put my parents' stones, benches, and remove the eyesore of the outer service benches. The benches were never to be donated to Barnes Memorial Wharf. That's where they are now. They faced away from the memorial, and they replaced something else. No one asked me, no one, no one gave me the courtesy. I came through because the call's with the Keith. Keith called me. And so this is the bench, this type of bench that they, that they had. And as these benches have been deteriorating, they decided to put another, another bench. Now, this is the bench, where I know this town bench is located. This is one of the benches. So we're talking about roughly $5,000 in family donation for the benches. 1984, '85, I started a fund with 100. This year, this time, I started with 1,000. I went to the two veterans organizations in Hingham, the American Legion and the VFW. I said, I'm challenging to match my donation. American Legion stepped right up. No, that was 2,000. Other aspects of things I've done in town, parts have been donated to assist this thing that we're doing. Now, I understand that it can't be done. It can't be done as designed, as required to be designed, as, it's, we can't do it. This is, this fits us better. Now, we're a town that continuously pats itself on the back about how much we care for veterans, how much we care for people in the service. We have a church down, the First Baptist Church, that sends over thousands of dollars a year of boxes to deploy troops. When my son was in the Middle East as a commander of a Coast Guard cutter, he used to come back after a two-week patrol out in the North Arabian Gulf, or NAG, as they call it, in a, in a zone, they, the Coast Guard calls it pat for swat, Forward Command Southeast Asia. And he would come home from two weeks, being chased and chasing down, escorting tankers, to the mailroom and being asked, sir, can you please stop telling the First Baptist Church to send you boxes? He would come home with stacks of 20, 25, 30 boxes. My son was the leader, he was the team leader. He distributed those amongst the six cutters. There were six Coast Guard cutters, and the person who got to the bin there could There were six Coast Guard cutters, and the person who got to the bin there continued to be there since 2003. He would distribute them. I'll get back to this. This is not how we support veterans. This is not how we support citizens. I can't accept this. I can't accept, and I will not accept, the decision by whoever it is to say those two benches are in the right place and you cannot do it, that you cannot build or you promised to build almost four years ago and have done zip, to say...now, Keith also encumbered some money because we knew there would be some maintenance requirements and stuff done. And it's been suggested that the Highway Department, DPW today, can't take care of it. They're going to contract it up. They contracted it up once. I don't know why they cannot do what they promised in honor my parents' memory and honor the memory of the over 2,600, excuse me, 2,600 Vietnam veterans, 52 remaining in the state of Massachusetts unaccounted for. And Joe Dunn didn't live in Hingham, he was from Hull. Joe Dunn, Lieutenant Joe Dunn, date of incident, the day he disappeared, 2/14/68. February 14th, does that ring a bell? Valentine's Day was also his anniversary. His wife Maureen was home with a baby on the way when she lost her husband who was shot down in a shuttle. He was flying from an aircraft carrier to a land base in unarmed aircraft. And sailed over Henan Island, which is under the control of the Chinese, shot down. They knew he had made it to the ground because his wingman saw him land in the water, opened his raft and signaled for over eight hours. He was left there, he was expendable. Secretary of Defense Robert McNamara decided it would be too risky to go rescue that man. That's why you're here today, leave no one behind. Don't leave those men behind, don't leave my parents behind, and don't leave me behind. Thank you.
Bob, thank you for that. Do we have any updates, Tom?
I don't think we can get into it during the meeting because it's not a posted session. However, I would say that Mr. Robert has been working on this, and we'll reach out to Mr. Beal tomorrow.
Okay. And I do want to thank you and Brenda, Bob, for all you do for veterans in our community. I know you do quite a bit, so thank you for that.
How about me, Bill?
All right, next item on the agenda is Town Administrative Select Board Report. So let's start with Town Administrator Report. I'll turn next to Tom.
No report tonight, thank you.
How about Art?
If I may, just two items over the past week. First, you may have seen through the town website that we're starting to recruit through the Talent Bank process, volunteers who'd be interested in serving on the Taxation Aid Committee. It's a committee that has existed in the past, and we're looking to reform it with the goal of connecting disabled and elderly folks to Hingham to resources that are donated through tax bills that folks are filing here. Folks who may be interested can certainly file a Talent Bank application. We're looking for folks to chime in by the 31st of May. Certainly, if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to field them. And second, just very quickly, just following up on the blood drive conversation, we have finalized the date, time, and location, the 31st, here at the Senior Center here as part of the Town Hall complex. We've posted the opportunity on our website, we're advertising it through our different social media channels, and I look forward to anybody who's interested in supporting the effort. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle?
Nothing from me this evening, thank you.
All right, turn to Select Board Reports, start with Liz.
Sure, thank you, Bill. I just wanted to say thank you to all the candidates that ran in the elections on Saturday, and thank you to everyone that voted. Congratulations to Joe Fisher. The school committee member, Ness Corenti, and I will be presenting to the Massachusetts Association of School Business Officials on Thursday, presenting the Sustainable Budget Process and how that's a collaborative process of doing budgeting. That's it.
Great. Joe?
Nothing seizing, thank you.
I do want to echo Liz's congratulations to all the candidates who ran, and also congratulations to Joe and his election on another term. So with that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All who are in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and the opposed, motion carries unanimously. Everybody have a great night, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.